So if everyone's ready, we can get started with the initial part of the meeting. Good evening. You're at the meeting of the Sauk planning board. I'm Joyce Larry-Clark. I'm the vice chair, acting as chair tonight. To my right is Jim Moller, to my left Jeff Broschu. We are a currently six-member board, which means at this point, we don't have a quorum. We are expecting another member by 6:30 at Diciani. So we're going to take care of some housekeeping matters initially while we can. We'll do what we can before we have a quorum. The purpose of planning board meetings, as most of you know, is review and make decisions on applications related to land use and development in Sauk. This is a public hearing. If people do want to speak during the public hearing or public comment time, you'll need to come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and your address for the record. Speak clearly because this is all being recorded. You're also being filmed. The cameras are in the back so that we want to make sure that there's a good record for the public. If there's a public hearing, speakers can speak initially for five minutes, and if there's time at the discretion of the board, you can speak for another three as a follow-up. Our plan is to conduct the meeting as expeditiously as possible. Typically, it's our habit not to take up new business after nine o'clock and to conclude the meeting by 9:30. We do have a long agenda, so we're hoping to get through as many items as possible. With that, we are not able to approve minutes at this point until we have a quorum. However, we can go ahead and take public comment. We do set aside 15 minutes for public comment. This would be for items not related to any particular applications this evening. So at this time, if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak, please come forward to the podium. If there is no member of the public interested in speaking on general planning board items, I'd suggest that we rearrange our agenda a bit to skip to item seven, which would be general correspondence if board members agree. Emily, oh, I haven't introduced everyone. Also with us, besides planning board members, is our city planner, Emily Cole Prescott, assistant planner Shannon Chisholm, staffer Lisa Harmon, and our city council liaison Phil Hatch from Ward Five. So thank you for coming. So back to you, Emily. Do we have any correspondence or updates from the planning department?
No correspondence. I do have a few planning department updates if you wanted to do that piece now.
Yes, please.
So February 3rd, it's a big day. We have a city council meeting where we've invited the long-range planning committee to join us in workshop on a presentation about the status of the Portland Road master plan and an update on that. The consultant from GP Cog and PAX will be there to give that presentation. Long-range planning is invited to workshop specifically with the city council. Certainly, certainly any planning board member can join and listen in on that. The long-range planning committee at their meeting on Monday night from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. will also be considering some sewer considerations relative to growth that this planning board had asked for them to look at. So they're going to be doing that Monday evening, 5:00 to 6:00. Certainly, again, welcome to come out to that if you would like to listen in. And then we're looking at ordinance amendments that we've been having ongoing updates about. This is relative. There's a subcommittee looking at some standards relative to design guidelines and updating those to be more of design standards. We also have potential appointment for a planning board member, it looks like, on that upcoming agenda for one of the seats here that we need to fill. And on February 4th, for this planning board agenda, we will have our annual training with attorney Saucier. Also that evening, we will have a training on development and plan review, reading development and plan reviews. Best practices from city engineer either Joe Laveri or Adam Bliss will be joining us. And we will also be reviewing our IT training videos, which could be potentially our favorite training. And then today, we kicked off the staff committee working on the housing action plan, kicked that plan off, and we will have updates going forward. We're going to have some listening sessions for the public in the future in the springtime, and there'll be public comment opportunities all along the way of that plan, along with the other plans that we've been doing. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Do we have any comments from members of the planning board? We're back to our, back to our regularly scheduled agenda, I think, then. We do have, as our first item, a workshop for 439 Main Street sketch plan review. It would be our preference to wait until we have our fourth member to start that. I think it makes more sense to have decent commentary from the planning board, so as many members as possible. So at this point, I think we'll just take a short break until our fourth member, Matt Diciani, joins us, which we expect to be in the next 10 or 15 minutes. So thanks for Good evening. So we're ready to start our regular meeting. Again, my name's Joyce Larry-Clark. I'm the vice chair, acting as chair tonight. With us as planning board members, to my far right, Matt Diciani, Jim Moller, to my left, Jeff Broschu, city planner Emily Cole Prescott, assistant planner Shannon Chisholm, staffer Lisa Harmon, and our city council liaison Phil Hatch from Ward Five. Our first agenda item tonight is a workshop on 439 Main Street, map 33 lot 25-134 through 33 lot 25-139. This is a sketch plan review for conversion of a structure into seven affordable housing dwelling units. Emily, I think, do you have any additional information for us?
Thank you. This is a sketch plan. It's within the medium-density residential. The work is going to be to convert the interior from commercial condominium structure to residential condominium. We asked a few questions, clarified the density, which was our major consideration, and it does follow the affordable housing provisions of section 230-703. follow the affordable housing provisions of section 230-703, and there's been clarification for that on the record. So, at this point, staff has provided our discussion topics here, and we look forward to following up with the applicant from the board's discussion.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening.
And here tonight for the applicant, Austin Fagan.
Thank you. As Joyce said, my name is Austin Fagan. I'm here with BH2M, representing Jackson Brown of J. Brown Investments. As it has been mentioned, this is an existing seven-unit commercial condominium. The site is part of the One Park Place site plan that was approved back in 1987. So, the intent with this would be, the parcel is about 28,000 square feet with 5,000 square foot per unit density requirement. Because there are seven units, it will utilize the affordable housing portion of the ordinance, which means that at least, so out of the seven units, I believe four of them will have to be marketed at an affordable rate. The site already is, has sufficient parking. There'll be some minor revisions for ADA spaces. There will be a dumpster that'll be added to the property, which will be hauled by a private hauler. There is about three times the amount of parking that there needs to be, so we're not worried about anything like that. Twelve spaces required, 31 available, even with the addition of the ADA parking spaces. We did receive a few comments from staff, looking for some information on trash and recycling. As I said, the applicant is going to be getting a private hauler to take care of that. Mail delivery, there is an existing gang mailbox for the property. The intent is to still use that. It's centrally located. Each one of the units can go over to that and pick up their mail. Question on exterior renovations. So, at this point, the applicant would like to keep the site as it is, or the building as it is. Exterior lighting, siding, there might be some revisions to the staircases at the back of the property, just for ingress and egress from the upper apartments, but that would be just something minor. And, let's see, we have not reached out to main water yet, but the building is currently served by water and sewer. We have provided additional information to the sewer department for expected flows. Haven't heard anything back on that yet, and after we do go through the sketch plan process, we plan to reach out to main water, just to make sure there's an ability to serve for the increase in flow for the apartments, as well as the addition of a sprinkler system. That's about all I have for you right now, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any planning board members have any questions or comments? Jim?
Thanks, Joyce. Just a couple. I think there were some questions about snow storage, but it sounds like if you have all those parking spaces, snow is probably the least of your problems.
I would agree.
And I think you mentioned these were going to be apartments, so they're being rented. It's not condos.
Correct.
Okay. And are those apartments going to be like upstairs, downstairs? I mean, it'd be, each apartment has its own floor. Is that how you're doing them?
So, right now, the condos are set up. So, on the, if you're looking at the site plan, on the right side of the building, it is labeled units 1A and 2A. So, those are units that'll be stacked, one on top of the other. Same thing on the other side of the building. So, you'll have, you know, walk-in, left-hand side will be one apartment, right-hand side will be one apartment, go up the stairs, same thing. The middle unit is its own unit, not a two-story portion of the building. And then, on the left-hand side of the building, it will be one entire floor is a unit, and the entire floor above that is also a unit. So, there's a good spread on what you'll see.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. I mean, it looked like the, I'm familiar with the buildings generally, and it looks like a good use of those buildings and giving us some affordable housing, as well as a plus. So, it certainly looks like a good project, and you've done a nice job presenting it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I did have a couple notes that I'd written down. One of them, we knew that you had to satisfy the density requirements to allow the number of units for the increase. By doing that, you were agreeing to make them affordable, which I believe is a 30-year commitment.
That's correct.
But of the seven units, there were a mix of two-bedroom and single bedrooms.
Correct.
Is there going to be a breakdown on the affordability? Will there be, you know, two two-bedrooms and two single bedrooms, or are they going to make all the single ones the affordable housing? Just what type of diversification would the city be getting as far as the affordability aspect of it?
Okay.
Because we're kind of on the cusp of our developmental area, where we're, you know, the walkability, the vision of the comp plan and the amenities, it's still relatively close to our downtown. But to meet all sectors, not just to let you check the box and say, yes, we've made our density requirements, and now we can have the additional unit. I was looking for some information on that.
Okay.
I had a question with regards to the dumpster and the turning movement. So, I understand you'll have a private hauler, but oftentimes, we're very concerned about vehicular circulation and where you have it kind of mapped out. Looks like it might be a tough spot for a traditional refuse vehicle to make that maneuver to pick it up for its weekly or bi-weekly servicing.
Yep.
So, maybe we could have like a turning overlay or another look at that, where that dumpster might be placed?
Absolutely.
Obviously, you met the requirement of the screening. I had a little question, because we're converting it from a condo, and some of the original documents look like there were some additional buildings that weren't built out. Has this been completely segregated, real estate-wise, from any other condo interests? So, you have basically full right title and interest to make it a standalone building. It looked like it was going to be more of a business park originally, on the original plans in the 80s.
Yeah, it is my understanding that this parcel has been broken out. There is an access easement across the parking lot for the building to the north of it, to access their property. But it is my understanding that currently, this is separate from the original plan that was in there.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure our staff will have picked up on that. Other than that, without a lot of changes to the outside, I mean, I think that your proposal kind of hits a lot of the boxes that we're tasked with reviewing and goals for the city, more housing units and existing infill, if you will. It's always unique. I kind of always have a little bit of a struggle when we have, you know, the buffering zones from residential to kind of a commercial district, and we kind of, the ebb and flows of some of these areas. I think, given the space and the parking area here, and just the surrounding buildings, it's still a pretty good transitional area, so I don't see a whole lot of concerns with like non-compatibility of uses side by side. So, like you said, the outside lighting's not changing. It may not currently meet our standards, but if you're not changing it, and I think it's probably pretty sufficient. No photometric plan, but looking at the sketch plan layout, it seems like it would be adequate for safety for the proposed use. So, those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? So, what are next steps here, Emily? Is this on our schedule for sometime in the future, or is this something for the applicant to take back, work on, and then present a full application?
Right, exactly. And the applicant will also ask them to hold a neighborhood meeting, because that's a requirement when you're converting to residential housing units. So, the next step would be to host a neighborhood meeting, and then to submit the site plan application to move forward with the proposal. This will only need a site plan review. I think we have conditional use review here. That's just an oversight. It will only need site plan review, because it's affordable housing.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to our first regular meeting agenda item, which is site plan review for 12 School Street, map 31 lot 17. That's an application to redevelop an existing structure into seven workforce housing dwelling units. So, Emily, do you have an update for us on this matter?
Just at the last meeting, the board had requested staff prepare draft findings of fact, and we have provided that. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I have a question. I think at the last meeting, the applicant kind of addressed that we didn't have a quorum, and there was a hard deadline. So, I'm assuming something's changed, and they're going to come up and give us some more information that we're still reviewing this? It's still an active proposal?
Happy to address that. We were applying for rural affordable rental grant from main housing. The application for that was due last Thursday. We did submit an application. We will not score any readiness points, so the likelihood of getting that grant is less, but we're still putting our hat in the, hat in the ring, or whatever the phrase would be, to fight the good fight.
Oh.
So, we're still hopeful that this project will move forward, and if that funding doesn't move forward, we'd still, you know, it's been great working with the city, and we'd love to find a way forward with this project. If it's not that funding, we'd love to partner with the city and look at other state and federal funds that might come available.
And just for the record, if you could please state your name and your relationship to the application.
Yeah, of course. My name's Dan Black. I'm the CFO of Quality Housing Coalition, which is the applicant.
Any other planning board questions or comments? We do have draft findings of fact and conditions of approval in front of us, if planning board members are interested in going through those and making any motions.
Madam Chair, I've reviewed the proposed findings of fact, and they look very complete, and I think they address all the topics that we discussed with the applicant over these various meetings. So, just to move things along, I'll move to that we adopt the proposed findings of fact.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second, Matt. Any discussion? I'll take a vote. All in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so four to zero to approve the findings of fact as proposed.
Madam Chair, I'll move to adopt the conditions of approval. I've reviewed them, and they also seem complete.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
And thank you for the second, Matt. Any discussion? Jeff?
Thank you. And Jim, I was hoping we might be able to look at possibly adding or modifying finding of fact 12. I was looking to think, or I was hoping that we could have something to really lock in the verbiage. They've presented that there would be two units available to city staff, city departments, but not having anything in the findings of facts. I was thinking something along the verbiage of two units shall always be available or occupied by city staff, or by and for city staff for housing. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, or if that's captured somewhere else in a city staff document, but if it is captured, I would like to have the duplicate language in the conditions of approval, so that we have it in both places, I thought.
So, I can speak to that, if you'd like. That's going to be included in the agreement that the city makes with the developer to actually purchase the property. So, there's going to be an agreement on how this all works, and it will be included as far as those two units. It's been expressed in the application, and I would caution us to do that, only because that language should mirror the agreement, and we don't have that language yet. But that will be worked out with city council. It was part of the RFP language that came forward, and it's part of the purchase and sale. And Tracy looks like she's here and can answer any additional questions the board may have.
Any reaction to that, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I feel like a little bit torn. I don't want it to be put out there and not followed through, but I think it's my impression, and one of the reasons I'd support this project, is that was a very key component. And my thought is, is what happens if during a certain cycle in time, that there's no city staff that's currently interested, and they go two or three months, and then they fill it with somebody who's non-city staff, and then we have a hiring need, and that that unit is no longer available? You can't necessarily evict them. So, I feel like, for me, it was important to have some sort of language that's saying, we're guaranteeing two units of this process. I know the public meeting space is a very appealing thing to some of the other members and the process. I just think it's important that we have something that's saying that our intention as the board, when we approved this, was that there would always be two units available. Now, I don't know if Jim could come up with some creative language that would put that back on staff, that staff will mirror, or that it would be in, I mean, it's hard. We're making, you know, a condition of approval. It should be pretty rock solid, but I would like to have something in there that says those two units would be available, even if they end up staying vacant for five months, and then police or fire or our school department needs an additional hire, that that would be available to them. It wouldn't have been filled by another, another non-city tenant.
Well, let's hear from Tracy, because I would guess that she has some, a base of knowledge and some information here about what, how the purchase and sale agreement's going to be worded.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Dishjarns. I'm the Director of Economic Development. Just as Emily had stated, this is the purchase and sale agreement. So, the language is written there, and that's part of it. That will always remain two units unless the city decides no longer that they need two units. But that is written in the purchase and sale agreement. The other terms in that regarding how long somebody's going to be staying there and that sort of thing are still going to be worked out through the administration. But it's in the purchase and sale agreement. So, it is documented.
Jim?
I, you know, I certainly understand Jeff's concern, and a big part of my eventual approval of this project is based upon those two workforce housing units for city employees. I don't, based upon the fact that it's going to be part of the purchase and sale contract with the city council, I think, Jeff, I think that's covered. So, I don't think we need to make it a condition of approval to, for site plan review, because it's already going to be addressed with the contract. And obviously, this is something that the city is very interested in and is going to pay a lot of attention to in years to come. So, I would respectfully suggest we don't include another condition of approval for that, because I think it's already covered.
I just have a concern, though, like kind of going with Jeff. What if that, they're telling us it's part of this, but what if it just doesn't happen? You know, you understand what I mean by that? Like, if, they're saying it's going to be part of the purchase and sale agreement, but what if that just somehow gets omitted? And by putting something, a condition of approval, not necessarily stating, stating something to the effect of, this needs to be a part of the purchase and sale agreement.
This is something that's going to be approved by council as well, correct?
It already has.
And what's been approved by council is seven units to set aside for city staff?
That is correct. Before selling the property, I did an RFP. I brought the proposal to council. It was discussed and hashed out, and that was one of the things that council had based on selling this property, was selling this property for a dollar. And the reason why selling this property for a dollar is based on seven units, two units must remain for city staff or school staff, you know, however, whomever needs it. And then the upstairs would remain a space for community, for community. And then the upstairs would remain a space for community, a community space. That was written in the purchase and sale agreement. That will also be written in the deed as a requirement as well. So all of that stuff will be in place.
So why don't I pull up the purchase and sale agreement on the screen, so we can all look at it? And why don't we just, either the board could reference the purchase and sale agreement specifically in a condition of approval, perhaps, or leave it off, knowing that this is part of the right title and interest provisions of the application?
And is this something that should be read into the record, because people who are watching this might not hear? I mean, I can, we're looking at a paragraph in the purchase and sale agreement entitled, "Purchase conditioned upon agreement to provide for city workforce housing." Namely, that the buyer and city negotiating and entering into an agreement whereby two of the housing units of the project are dedicated to municipal employees that otherwise meet project eligibility requirements. In other words, these folks, the city employees, also have to meet the wage requirements.
And the requirements based on that would be, the two units must remain the same price line as the other units. So it's kind of keeping in that affordability. So they can't, because you're a city employee, whatever, "Oh, we're going to raise the rent." It must remain the same as the other units.
Got it. Any members have questions or comments regarding this provision?
I'm good. I'm good now.
I'm fine, thank you. Thank you, Jim.
And this document is in the December 17th Planning Board Meeting Packet, in case anyone's reviewing, trying to review it online.
Well, we do have a motion on the table still, made by Jim, seconded by Matt, to approve the conditions of approval as proposed. If we don't have any more discussion, all in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so that's four to zero to approve the conditions of approval as proposed.
Madam Chair, I'll move to grant site plan approval for the project at 12 School Street.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second, Matt. Any discussion? All in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, four to zero to approve the application for site plan review for 12 School Street. Thank you, everybody. Our next item is Item C, two, well, yes, six C, Milbrook Road, map 60 lots 15 through 18-1, and map 60 lot 20, site plan review for tree removal for the Saco School Department. Emily, can you give us an update on this matter, please?
Yes, so the Saco School Department is looking to clear some trees at the location of the future Saco Elementary School. We did bring this as planning staff, we brought this application to the Conservation Commission already, and received some initial advisory comments from them, which is in the report. The school department here will, Superintendent Jeremy Ray, I believe, will address some of the timeline considerations as to why they're asking for a tree clearing application review at this point. One of the things that they are looking to do is to keep the timeline of the overall project. Just for some background, we did look at a somewhat similar application request when we looked at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. We had considered like a Phase 1 site plan approval, because some trees need to be cleared, and a building had to be demolished, so that they could start work before they had the full site plan approval to keep their timeline. So it's totally something that we've looked at before. The application itself is eligible for site plan review for tree clearing, because the ordinance changed in the spring relative to how we review clears that happen of two acres or more for development purposes. And so that is what the school is subject to today, even though I believe they'll also be using the timber harvesting regulations as well. They will be developing within a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we'd like to hear from the applicant. If you can introduce yourself and...
Good evening. Sorry. Jeremy Ray, Superintendent of Schools. We're here as part of another exciting step. As you know, voters this past June voted over 75% to build two new elementary schools in Saco with over $100 million coming in state funding. One of the interesting things about this project is, it seems like there's a exciting new, like, barrier that we clear, while also every week with something new in the project, whether that's as simple as designing the outside, or learning more about why we want to have tree cutting a little bit earlier than this. Part of the projects that we're thinking about is, we are on a timeline where it is our hopes that we are putting shovels in the ground sometime in late summer, or, you know, early September. As we look at those timelines, obviously, there's much more, still final approval that's needed by the State Board of Education. But the goal of this project is to be open in the fall of '28, '29 with these two new schools. And as Superintendent of Schools, we know that there are always construction delays, and while we have a target date of sometime in the winter of '28 to be finished, we know that everything never goes as planned, and we do not want to be a school department that is starting a school into the fall. That could be the worst thing that could happen to families and kids, is having new bush routes a couple of months later after a start of a school year, or for teachers and our staff, moving during the middle of a school year, or as part of a school department once that did that in the middle of the school year, and it was not a fun experience. And so when we come to this situation, obviously, we know that the best piece for clearing trees is in the middle of wintertime, when the ground is frozen, so protect some of the surfaces, and this allows us to give us a head start. What we learn through the process is that if this is delayed after April 14th, this could trigger an additional BAT study, which would then put off the start of this project until the clear-cutting until after November 1st, correct? Which would then delay approximately six months of the project. Obviously, building delays is time and money. We are on a very strict budget, that the number that we approve is what the Department of Education has given us. So as you move through those delays, you're looking at the items that you need to give up in your budget, or in the building, in order to come in at the right number. So there are many factors while we're here tonight. We're just trying to do everything we can to continue moving this project forward, to get our kids into these buildings by the fall of '28, '29 school year. And I certainly can entertain any questions I can answer, and I have the engineers from Oak Point Associates to answer any more technical questions.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had notes here that the total lot size is 76.9 acres or so. Your proposed clearing of 17 and 1/2, but it kept stating that the wetland area is not included in that 17 and 1/2. So at what point is the wetland area going to be addressed? Because you had some wetland impacts, if I recall, right? So you're going to have to clear those at a later date?
Hi, I'm Jonah Dewaters. I'm a civil engineer with Oak Point Associates. So the plan that we have in front of you, the reason we're staying out of the wetlands is because we haven't sought DEP permitting yet, so we're trying to make absolutely sure that we're out of the wetlands. When we checked with the DEP, that was a request of theirs, too. So the remainder of the tree clearing will happen after November 1st. The idea here is to get enough of the site cleared for the contractor to start operations. You can see kind of those dark blue outlines. Those are the rough outlines of the schools. So you can see that they have plenty to do if the trees are cut down. So the idea here is they'll get in after the 1st of November to be able to clear the rest. And that lines up with permitting and everything. We're trying to kind of thread a tight needle to make sure that we can get everything happening in the right process.
My other question was, I didn't see anything, there was no sort of a timber inventory, trees of significant importance, you know, 24 inches at breast height. There was no site plan that was mapped out, not necessarily a traditional report, but, you know, we're very accustomed to seeing that in reviews for much, for these large clearing areas. And did you have anybody go out and try to map out the significant trees on the site currently?
No, not specifically. We will work with a timber harvester, though, to get an inventory done. Just to get, the Conservation Commission asked you for just kind of a general idea of what's out there.
That's correct. And so, you know, in the past, like you say, you're just trying to thread a needle, and I'm respectful of all the time and effort that's gone into, you know, finding this location and your approval. At the same time, we have these standards that we need to hold the bar for everyone equally. And there was one larger project that I was involved in, and these rare American chestnut trees, you know, appeared. They've been there forever, and nobody really knew about them. And it's just, I don't think it's necessarily fair. I understand the window, right? Because we've got this BAT thing that's greatly impacted all the applicants that come before us, and you need to get in there. But we don't know, we haven't done a site walk yet. I'm not a, you know, an arborist, or by any stretch, but having some sort of information that says there are no significant value trees, or very rare botanical features that are going to be, you know, demolished, I think is part of checking our due diligence. And I haven't, I don't see any feedback. So, I mean, one thing we were talking about is we need to have a site walk, right? We haven't talked about a site walk for this site at all. And how do we fit all this in to keep them on time? You know, can we, can we move this? We have a, we were supposed to schedule, I mean, the site walk is, I guess, one that I would have some interest in, or a professional evaluation that says, "These are all your run-of-the-mill, standard hardwood trees, there's nothing to really worry about." And then...
So we did have a rare, it's called an RTE survey, Rare Threatened Endangered Plant Survey. They did identify a rare species of plant called hollow joe pie weed. They followed up after they identified that it might be on the site, did an extensive search and didn't find any. So I'm not aware of any rare, threatened, or endangered plant species on the property.
Yeah, I saw that in the packet, but I didn't know if that was limited just to the small plant species versus the trees.
I believe it speaks to all plant species, but I'm not 100% sure.
Any other questions or comments? As a reminder, this is an application completeness review. So our goal tonight is to determine whether or not the application is complete, and if not, what items are missing, completely, appropriately, of course, asking questions about whether there are items missing that the applicant needs to provide to us in order for us to determine that the application is complete, and then schedule a public hearing. Any other questions or comments from planning board members? Jim?
Just a few questions. I noticed from the application that on the southerly part of the site, most of the trees had been cut, so it was just like scrub growth there. But in the northern part of the site, there were more mature trees there, which I guess goes to Jeff's point. Is the area where the schools are going to be constructed, is that sort of a mix of the scrub as well as the mature trees? It is?
Yeah, for the most part, yes.
I mean, in terms of, I mean, I agree with Jeff. I think a site walk would be a great idea, just so we can appreciate what the site's going to look like, and get a sense of, you know, where the building's going to be. For application completeness, though, I don't know that we need that done to determine the application complete. I reviewed all the materials. It looks like everything that we would want to see for a complete application is there. So my inclination is, unless board members feel differently, is to move to determine the application complete.
Is that a motion?
Well, since no one else is saying anything, then yes. I'll move that we find the application complete.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Thanks for the second, Matt. Any questions or comments? All in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And chair votes yes to find the application complete. Next step, question from staff. When does the board wish to host a site walk? Do we have general consensus that board members would like to have a site walk? Here, so. Emily, do we have a schedule where we can determine when a site walk would be possible? And are we, and I'm sorry, just to clarify, I know there's a report from the Conservation Commission. So if, has the Conservation Commission already done its own site walk, or would they be joining us on this?
We'll invite them as well.
Great.
Lisa's pulling up the dates here for us.
Madam Chair, I guess while she's pulling up dates, I'm kind of wondering, I mean, a site walk is of value, but I don't think, I guess, can we, to expedite their timeline, is there a way that they can have a survey done, or an evaluation of this parcel done, to make sure there's no rare botanical trees on it? And just kind of get that report to us, because we're looking at a limited review here, just to allow the tree clearing. And I guess, from my point of view, if it's done by a professional, and they can get us that data quicker, it'd be more expeditious than us taking, you know, the 10 days to schedule a site walk, and then say, "Hey, we'll wait for the Conservation Commission to..." They usually turn around and report in a couple of days, but, you know, then our next meeting, can we just, does it make sense that we just say, "Hey, can we get a professional review of this proposed clearing area to make sure there are no rare, or, you know, just rare trees of significant value?" And we know it's a large site, they're going to have to clear a lot. But when we got like the feedback for those American chestnuts, how rare they were, it was kind of eye-opening, and I wouldn't want to be shortsighted and skip over this process. But at the same time, why do we have to drag it out to do a site walk, and wait for a report, and then request a professional review? Can we just kind of request an evaluation now, even before our site walk? Maybe they could be flagged for our site walk. I don't think it needs to be a detailed mapping, like an actual, like, inventory count. It's just an identification that, hey, this is a professional forester, they were not, they made the evaluation. And then maybe that could be in conjunction with our site walk, to be a little bit more expeditious, if that's possible.
Jonah, how possible is that in the next, because we're talking about potentially scheduling a public hearing for February 18th?
We can reach out to the consultant that did the RTE survey to confirm that tree species were included. That would be relatively quick. But to get a consultant out there to actually do a more comprehensive timber survey, if it's not included in the RTE survey, likely going to take a few weeks, I would imagine.
But if we could at least get clarification as to what's included in the RTE survey, that would be useful.
The other option for the board is, we could invite our landscape architect out there to walk the site with you. I don't know if she'd be available on the date you pick, and then perhaps the school department could invite their consultant as well, so you have two professionals who can join you on the site walk. So you don't necessarily, you may not be able to get a report in time, but you may be able to get some opinions while you're out in the field.
I mean, I think that would work out quite well, so, so, sure, if we could schedule a site walk sometime in the near future... a site walk sometime in the near future, and we could have a public hearing on February 18th, we could probably have everything we need for that date, to really evaluate everything, and that doesn't slow down the school department. While, while the planners are trying to find a date for us, for a site walk, I'll move to schedule a public hearing in this matter for February 18th.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks for the second. Jeff, any discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so four to zero to schedule a public hearing for February 18th. Now we just have to find out when we're doing the site walk.
So we were looking at either the morning of February 11th, or the morning of February 18th. The morning of February 11th would mean that you're not in a night meeting after starting so early, but it's up to you. And then we've been doing those at 7:45, so 7:45 or 8 o'clock. I don't know if that works with the applicant either.
The 11th would be preferable.
It's fine.
Is the 11th okay?
Yeah, I think that would be fine, we have, I have MMA training in the afternoon, but I'd be more than happy to do that in the morning, and I think it would be a little bit more expeditious if we could get our peer reviews, we could possibly get a report before the public hearing. So yes, the 11th.
7:45 or 8? Any preference to the time?
Since I'm not working, I'll say 8, but, you know, this gives me a chance to have another cup of coffee, but, you know, I'll go whenever.
What about staff? I think you usually prefer 7:45?
I think we'd prefer 8, closer to 8, yeah. You okay with 8, Jeff?
Yes. Take one for the city.
Oh, thank you. So 8:00 AM, February 11th?
Works for us.
Anything else? Sounds good.
Could we have some clarification as to where we'll meet? It's a fairly large parcel, are we going in off of Millbrook, or are we going in from Route 1?
Sure. So there is a gravel parking area just south of the Ford dealership, that's the best spot to go in. There used to be a house in there, so there's a clear driveway you can walk down, well, sort of cleared, but the gravel parking lot just south of the Ford dealership.
So right on Route 1?
Yep. The sign for the public hearing was right there, I'm assuming it still is. I guess it's the sign for the meeting tonight, the public hearing.
Got it. Any other questions? I think we're all set. Thank you. So next item is item 6D, 88 Maple Street. This is a continued public hearing and continued application review for site plan and conditional use review to add an additional dwelling unit. This is in medium-density residential. Emily, do you have an update for us?
Hello, Joyce. I'm not Emily, but I do have an update for you. So, at the last planning board meeting where this application was discussed, it was requested that draft findings of fact and conditions of approval be prepared for tonight. So that was included in the packet for this meeting. There were also some questions about the parking on site. A new revised parking plan has been submitted by the applicant, and also reviewed by the code enforcement department, the Department of Public Works, and our traffic peer review specialist. Our traffic peer review specialist did suggest an added condition of approval of just placing a no parking sign on one of the spaces in the turnaround area, which is located adjacent to the existing three-bay garage. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and the applicant is also here to answer questions if you have them.
Thanks, Shannon. Anything further from the applicant? Do you have anything additional for us? Any questions or comments from planning board members? I do notice, yeah, that's the condition of approval number 11 about the no parking sign.
Well, Madam Chair, the, I think the last issue that we had to deal with was this parking issue. And with all the city staff providing their input, I think we've, you know, the applicant has found the solution to the parking problem. And with that turnaround condition, number 11, as you noted, Madam Chair, that, that seems to put a final fix on, on any uncertainty associated with that. So I'll move that we approve the findings of fact for 88 Maple Street.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thanks, thanks for the second. I'll say it was Matt, I guess. Any, any discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So findings of fact as proposed or approved, four to zero.
Madam Chair, I would move, if we're going to be looking for the conditions of approval, I would make a motion that we edit condition of approval number 11, to read that the applicant shall post a turnaround-only, no-parking sign in the turnaround area, and the area shall be kept clear of snow, vehicles, and other objects at all times.
Thanks for the motion, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that you, Jim?
Yes.
And thank you for the second. Jim, any discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes to amend proposed condition of approval.
So Madam Chair, I guess for the board, I have an additional thought. I know that the large focus here was parking. Here again, we are doing some infill development, a lot of the goals, and it's a unique situation, the parking's a little challenging. We touched upon it a little bit, but snow removal, the snow is, got to be considered, I think, in this. And I was kind of throwing around the idea of an additional condition of approval, something along the lines that snow storage shall not be within any of the proposed parking or driveway paved areas, and snow must be hauled off within 24 hours to keep clear for access of emergency service response vehicles. Or something along those lines. I mean, we, it's a very tight area, we just need to make sure that we don't allow the infill of snow storage throughout the winter, I think is an important objective to have here. I'm open to hearing what you have to think.
Well, I, I think that's a really good idea, Jeff. I'm not so sure about the hauling off, because I guess it really depends on the snowstorm, right? Whether or not that's necessary. But, but if everything else in your proposed condition is, is, remains, then the applicant will have to find some way of removing the snow from all the parking areas and the pavement, and however the applicant does it, I, I'm sure will be fine. I'm just hesitant to insist that the snow be hauled off, because that, that in and of itself can be problematic after a big snowstorm, trying to find a contractor who's, you know, with a truck and a payload or whatever, you need to go and haul it away. So I, I'm going to give the applicant a chance to be creative and figure it out for himself, but the, but having those areas clear, I think is essential, absolutely.
So, yeah, so I guess I didn't really think of it that way. So you'd be fine with something that just says the areas will be cleaned within 24 hours, whether he hires somebody to pile it up, whether he melts it on site, whatever he does, our objective of them being cleared within 24 hours of the storm.
Absolutely, I think that's, that's essential. I mean, for all those people who live there, too, they would want that.
So something along the lines of all marked parking areas will be cleared of snow within 24 hours of any storm?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we add a condition of approval number 13 to read all the proposed parking and driveway areas shall be cleared of any snowfall within 24 hours of the storm. To be cleared for access and emergency service response.
I'll second that.
Thanks for the motion, Jeff, and the second. Jim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, four to zero, to add condition of approval number 13 regarding clearing areas of snow, which is now up on our screen. All the proposed parking and driveway areas shall be cleared of any snowfall within 24 hours of a storm, to be cleared for access and emergency service response.
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt the amended conditions of approval for 88 Maple Street.
Thanks for the motion, Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second. Matt, any discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, four to zero, to approve the conditions of approval as amended.
So Madam Chair, I'll move that we grant site plan and conditional use approval to the project at 88 Maple Street.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second, Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, four to zero, to approve the application. Thank you. So the next item is agenda item 6E, Waterfall Drive Residential Development Map, 63 Lot 6. This is a proposal for 195 residential dwelling units with associated site improvements. This is part of the Park North Development Contract Zone. We have an update from planning staff?
There's been response comments that are under review, and we did receive the capacity-to-serv letter from Main Water, we just didn't have a copy of it in our records. That was in the packet, as well as, I think we put it in the after-the-fact packet, because it was in last January 21st, after-the-fact packet. That's really all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. Elliot Chamberlain, owner of Park North Development. I'd like to speak first about, since this is a larger, longer, drawn-out approval process because of the size of it and the number of units, I would love to try to, if it's possible, to deal with, kind of leave the infrastructure alone that's being worked out with between city staff, ourselves, the water district, the sewer district, and there's still a lot of components of that going on. And try to focus on all the other non-infrastructure issues, if we can, and then hopefully we can not have to come back at every meeting, and then, once that infrastructure is to a point where staff and the water district and the sewer district and ourselves are all on the same page, bring it back in. Unless somebody sees a problem with that approach.
Any comments from planning board members? Jeff?
I would just have a thought. How the capacity-to-serv letter from Main Water was very specific, 195 units, they felt like they had capacity for the static, with, given the static pressure in the area and the size of the pipes. But they were very clear to point out that they didn't have any analysis for your fire suppression. How would we handle if you were to be approved? And then they find out that there isn't enough infrastructure, and it did say the burden would be on you as the applicant to, you know, make modifications to their system. How would that be, be addressed, you know?
Well, in that case, we would never be back then, because that, that one item would be something that we would have to deal with during the infrastructure issue, so if we could never get to that point, we'd either have to change something, or you wouldn't see us again. So we would never get to the approval point.
So tonight, we're focusing on non-infrastructure?
If that works, and obviously Matt can bring us, bring everybody up to speed as to where we are at this point, and then go with questions from there.
Good evening, my name is Matt Orr, I'm a civil engineer with Sebago Technics. Since the last time we were in front of you, as Elliot just mentioned, I think our biggest focus has been on getting the review with the city staff and other utilities involved with this project, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, making sure what we're proposing is all going to line up and, and work, and, you know, site catch basins in the right locations, stormwater infrastructure, the electrical, water utilities, sanitary. There hasn't been a lot of changes, I believe the last time we were here, we discussed the modification to the Phase 1 as far as total units that would be involved, and again, that was outcome of the remaining trips in the TMP. So as far as that item goes, we're, there haven't been any further changes on that, so there's not much different on the phasing plan that is in front of you all tonight. We're happy to discuss if you have any questions on other items.
Any board members have any additional questions or comments? Jim?
The only question I had was associated with the Conservation Commission, they had posed some questions, Matt, in, in the two memos that they provided. Have you had an opportunity to look at those, and could you help us respond to those?
I don't have the questions in front of me at the moment, if you can jog my memory, I'll just, I don't, we haven't provided specific responses to those questions, but...
Yeah, I'm not, not trying to trick you here.
Nope.
They, but they seem to have, and I think we discussed some of this on the, on the site walk, but trails on and off the site, they were worried about, or they were hoping that the trails might connect to a future community center, a possible connection to Cascade Falls Park. I, I know, again, we discussed some of this on the site walk, and then, and then they were just talking about the types of trees that should be planted, so I guess that's really not an issue. So it's, it seems to be mostly the trails, I guess, is what they were focused on. Do you have any update on that?
Jim, we did, when we were out there, I do remember, we talked about, I actually brought it forward about, I think when you say park and the community center, I think you're talking the same spot, unless you mean something else besides the park, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I actually, I don't know either, because I'm just reading from their report, and I saw something about a community center, and I didn't know quite what they meant, unless you are... meant, unless you were
Right.
Going to propose something in the development.
So when you pull in off of Route 1 down Waterfall, you get to a roundabout where the mailboxes are, the community center is going to be just to your right, to the south side of Waterfall Drive. In the back of that location, there's a steep drop-off, then it comes back up to an existing trail that's there today, that we built a few years ago. I talked about the possibility we would look into, could you physically make that connection? I won't deny it's a pretty wide and deep ravine, so I'm not sure that's going to be possible, but certainly, in that, once you get back up on the existing trail network, there's about eight to 10 acres that we preserved forever, that the trail goes through. There was probably two or three acres that we didn't even touch. I did say that we could easily do a loop, so that it would be an expansion off the existing trail, just to give a little variety to it, so that was a second item that got talked about. The third item, I remember we talked about, was actually not even on this site, but on property we own. When you go down to the old, I still refer to it as the old monkey trunks, on the backside of Hancock Lumber, we were going to probably use that as a stockyard during the construction of this, and that used to be when the old inn was there, the Cascade Inn was there, that used to be a trail network that walked out of the backside of the Cascade Inn and walked right down to the falls. I said, I wouldn't mind doing a temporary trail, and there is a concept plan of what that area is going to be, and if it falls through with what I have on paper, it was going to be, I think, 38 units, all duplexes, that would go down to a dead-end road, and we've talked to both the fire department and public, not Public Works, Parks and Rec, about someday when that road gets built, if it gets built exactly the way our plan is, you'd be able, somebody'd be able to park down there and pick up the trail and come in on the, what would be the north side of the Waterfall. And Fire and Rescue wanted it so that they could put an ambulance down there if they needed to, if there was ever an injury, and come in from the opposite side of the falls, which right now they have no access to. So those are the three items that I remember. The one that I just mentioned, certainly we don't mind doing as a temporary basis right now, so people could use it to get down to the falls, and the loop system off the trail, we can show that on a plan. Honestly, I'm just not sure if we'd be even physically able to cross the ravine to any type of safety, or it, I mean, we're probably about a 30-foot deep ravine, and it's probably at the two high points, you're probably 150 feet across, so it's not a little puddle jumper.
Well, no, that's very helpful, and I appreciate everything you've done so far to, you know, provide accessibility for people who enjoy that sort of trail-walking, and so, you know, recognizing the geography's challenging there, and, you know, at some point, you know, doing what you can to try to make that...
Yeah, so we can commit to those last two items, and I can admit, can commit to at least looking into crossing, if there's a spot along the ravine where there's two parcels of land that get much closer and much shallower, possibly it's something we can do, but I'm just not sure if that one will be able to happen.
Well, I mean, even if people walking out of your development, all the way to Cascade Road, and, but they have some path to be able to get down there, that works, too. So, you know, everything you've suggested, it sounds like you've put a lot of thought into addressing the Conservation Commission's concerns.
And I can't deny, the path that is there today, that walks from up by Dormary Drive, where you enter it, all the way down to, very close to the falls, that gets, and then people walk up the, what I'll call the sewer gravelled road, and then back up Waterfall, that gets used extensively. So they are very well-used, more than honestly most paths that we've done in subdivisions. So it is, it's been a great asset.
Well, it's a wonderful area. I don't think I used, or even thought of going to Cascade Falls for the first 20 years I lived in Saco, but once I did, it was, it's a beautiful area.
Oh, it's a gorgeous area, yes.
And so, you know, your development is poised to provide a lot, a lot of benefit to many, many homeowners down there, so...
And I, but I think what my memory tells me, which I don't count on as much as I used to, is that those were the, those were the three items that got talked about with the Conservation Commission.
Well, and the other one, I guess, is the Conservation Commission encouraging the use of native and diverse species with a landscaping plan, but that's the landscaping plan. So I, Matt's nodding his head, he's well aware of that request, and I think that's something that our landscape peer reviewer usually points out as well. Any other board questions or comments? This is advertised as a public hearing, so when we're ready, we can entertain a motion to open a public hearing again, reopen the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to reopen the public hearing.
Thanks for the motion. Jeff, do we have a second? Thank you for the second. Jim, any discussion? All those in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So the public hearing is reopened. If you have any desire to speak regarding this development, please come up to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record, and comments are limited to five minutes.
Madam Chair, seeing no one come forward, I'll move to continue the public hearing till February 18th.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second. Matt, any discussion? All those in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, four to zero, to continue the public hearing to February 18th. Thank you. And I'm guessing Sebago Technics is here for the next agenda item as well, which is 6F, Four Waterfall Drive. That's for a MAP 63 Lot 6-7 Family Center Medical Office Building, also in the Park North Development. So anything to, any update from planning staff on this?
At the last meeting, we were asked to provide you draft findings of fact and conditions of approval. I think we've captured what you're looking for. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Any update from the applicant?
Good evening again. Matt Orr with Sebago Technics, civil engineer on behalf of Park North Development LLC. Since the last time we met, I think we just had some outstanding comments from Public Works that need to be cleaned up in regards to some of the utility infrastructure, and just some questions that they had with stop signs that were being proposed, and I believe, I think that was sidewalk connection as well, to connect to the rest of the development towards the 72-unit apartments to the east of this project site. Other than that, there's not a lot that has changed. As I think Emily mentioned, we did receive, the letter from Main Water was added to the packet, so we're all set there, and look forward to any questions you all have.
Any planning board member questions or comments? It does appear that the capacity to serve letter from Main Water is in our, after-the-pack packet this evening. We do have draft findings of fact and conditions of approval. Do any planning board members have any comments or edits to these draft documents? Jeff?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the draft findings of facts.
Thanks for the motion, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second. Jim, any discussion? All those in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Draft findings of fact approved, four to zero.
And Madam Chair, I'll move to adopt the conditions, draft conditions of approval, which I think were mistakenly described as additional findings of fact, but I think they meant conditions of approval.
Thank you for the motion, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second. Matt, any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to kind of point out, I think part of the findings of facts, there was talk of the dumpster screening being captured as a condition, and I didn't see it in the conditions of approval, unless I missed it. So I had a note here that we should probably be adding, a condition of approval number 20, that the dumpster screening detail is to be added to the plans and accepted by city staff prior to the start of construction.
I had that as six, bullet number one, number two, provide final details for dumpster screening, fencing on detail sheet.
I apologize. Probably shouldn't read so late in the evening, but
Thank you.
Staff had it. Thank you.
Got it. Easy to miss in this size packet, I think. Any other discussion regarding the proposed conditions of approval? All those in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, four to zero, to approve the draft conditions of approval.
Madam Chair, I'll move to grant site plan and site location development approval for the Four Waterfall Drive application.
Thank you for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks for the second. Jeff, any discussion? All those in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to item G, which is 800 Portland Road, if we could take a five-minute recess, and then we'll regroup. and then we'll regroup. The next item on our agenda is item 6G 800 Portland Road, map 59 lot 1. This is a proposal for 49-unit residential condominiums with a 3,000-square-foot commercial building. This is application completeness review for site plan, conditional use, and preliminary subdivision review in Portland Road zoning district. And I should make a note before we start that I was involved with this property in terms of representing Mr. Mead, the current owner's mother's estate. So actually, I'm the one who wrote the deed to him from her estate. I haven't been involved with this project at all, but certainly wanted to disclose that information and see if any planning board members had any issues with me sitting tonight.
I don't. I don't have an issue.
And the applicant?
Hi, thank you. Madam Chair, my name is Caleb Brass. I'm a project manager from Gorel Palmer. Here with me tonight is Tony Sasso, a owners representative for CBC Construction. He's here, happy to answer any questions as well that you might have.
Caleb, can you, can I just stop you for a sec?
Sure.
Initially, I was just trying to find out if you had any objection to me sitting in on this, okay?
No, please, yeah.
Okay.
No, we'd love the forum.
Okay. I didn't want to point that out. Yeah, we usually like to have planner, planner, planner summary first, so if we could have an overview from, from planning staff, and then, then we'll, we'll give you plenty of opportunity to speak. Emily?
That's my cue. Thank you. So.
I wasn't sure which of you was, was on, so I just said planning staff.
Got you. So thank you for providing the overview. Basically, 3,000 square feet of commercial structure will be in the front, so that's great to have the commercial property along Route 1. Forty-nine dwelling units you'll see in a mix of duplex and single-family units. The application completeness checklist was in the meeting packet. We have a couple of notes that I'd be happy to go over with you if you have any questions on. And the next steps would be to review for application completeness. We did give you staff peer reviews that we've received so far. We're just wondering if you'd like to host a site walk, when you'd like comments from the Conservation Commission. I would, I would recommend getting comments from the Conservation Commission on this one as well. There were some questions about the financial capacity letter. We recommend the board look at high-intensity soil survey. I know the applicant has engaged, has told us that they've engaged someone to get a high-intensity soil survey done in response to that comment. And I'll let the applicant and the board ask any questions and get any answers to that. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant?
Okay, thank you. So just to state again for the board, my name is Caleb Brass, a project manager from Gorel Palmer. Here with me tonight, Tony Sasso, an owners representative, representing CBC Construction as well. So we're here before you. We're calling this project the Millbrook Pines, 49-unit mixed-use development, so the mixed-use being the 3,000-square-foot commercial aspect located at the frontage at Portland Road. We're here tonight going for preliminary subdivision completeness review, site plan, and conditional use review. Share that here. So just a project overview. This is at parcel map 59 lot 1. We are in the Portland Road District. As we mentioned, there are 49 residential units that are being proposed tonight. You'll see on the next slides. Those are comprised of single-family and two-unit structures only. The 3,000-square-foot commercial space, we will talk a little bit more, but we have a tenant. We had provided a letter of an intent at that time from the tenant, which would be for a year ago, sports medicine and physical therapy. So that is the, the intent for this, at this time, for that unit. For permitting requirements, like we just mentioned, site plan, subdivision, and conditional use review is what we're going through here at the city level, as well as in main DEP, site location, which is also administered through the city. Permitting timeline, just going through, and it's also in the planner's memo here. We had our neighborhood meeting in November 2024. We had submitted and actually done a pre-application meeting, which I understand from Emily, we were one of the first ones, or if not the first one, to go through with the pre-application meeting. So aside from that, we also had two PDRC meetings. So we've had and really enjoyed some really good back-and-forth with staff and gotten some really good feedback on this project to this point. So it's making us feel very good about the project at this point and just standing up to zoning, and then also what else we've been able to incorporate. So at this time, we're obviously, we're looking for a completeness vote from you all this evening, and then looking to schedule a site walk, and then moving forward with the application from here. So here's just a look, a little bit of a colored plan, showing the site plan with some of the landscape elements shown as well. There's some grading underlying there, but with an aerial showing just basically where we are here. So north being top of the page, and then on the right-hand side, east is Portland Road, Route 1 here. So the property now exists as just a single-family residence. I'll start to kind of talk about the two development pods. So the first pod being generally on the right-hand side, and then the second on the left. Generally, within the, the development part on the right, this all exists just as open lawn area that's maintained and developed currently today. And then a majority of the rear, all of the rear being wooded area now, which would be ultimately cleared as well. But what you'll see here, we're, we have a full two-way access driveway with a left and a right out onto Portland Road. That comes in, and then there are these two development pods with one primary road network in here as well. We have a mix of the duplexes and the single families. There's actually about, there's 18 duplex structures, so 36 units comprised of that, and then 13 single-family units here. These are, so there's 49 units total, as we mentioned. The units, I believe, are, we've provided some elevations and floor plans at the, at this time as well. These are a mix of predominantly two-bedroom, about 1,000-square-foot units. The single families, there's actually two different footprints that we've provided for those at the moment, and then all the, the duplex units are, are from the same footprint at this time. The duplex units do have one garage space with them, so there's one parking space in the front. And then all the single-family units have two parking spaces provided right, right next to the, those units. There are two sets of guest parking spaces we have in the front development pod towards the top-right of that, of this area, if I can circle it here, is where the trash is located, and then the mailbox will be centrally located there as well as four parking spaces. And then towards the rear in the second development pod, there are four other on-street parking spaces, just to provide a total of eight for that, that area as well. We're also understanding that during non-business hours, this parking area will be open for the commercial space, and so that might be used as well. But we're feeling pretty comfortable with what we have for parking, provided for actual tenants and guests. If I move over just to the next slide here, this is just a look, this is the survey that is describing the existing property now. So generally here, you can see the tree line of the existing lawn area with the single-family residents, and then much of this area being cleared here in this upper, upland area in the west of the property. So you'll see on this what we have for natural resources and what we've done for mapping. We'll talk a little bit more in detail. But Millbrook runs through the property west to east in the northern portion of the property. There are two other small tributaries that were mapped, one in the center of the site headed north, and then another along the rear property line here. So we had those mapped out by Longview Partners as, as well as the associated wetland areas. What you'll see here, as I'm circling kind of in the center, kind of south border of the property, was a vernal pool that was identified, and there were no egg masses, anything for habitat identified within that. We had forwarded our vernal pool assessment forms to the state, and they had acknowledged that as well, that this is a non-significant vernal pool at this time. So this is just a look at the site plan, describing a lot of the same things that we had previously shown. Generally, we have a 75-foot setback that we have for the, at least state minimum for stream setbacks and other natural resource setbacks here. We are providing those 75-foot setbacks at least for the central, or the central stream, and then the streams of the rear on the west side of the property here. There will be some encroachment as the, the roadway does go between the vernal pool and the stream. There is no stream crossing, but that portion of the road would be within the 75-foot setback to the stream, and then there are no impacts proposed to the vernal pool at this time. There are a small amount of wetland impacts just on the, in the first development pod up on the northerly edge. I can't recall. I believe we had somewhere in the realm of 2,000, 2,500 square feet of total wetland impact here on the property. What you see to the north, though, with some kind of darker gray hatch in here, we're actually showing what would be 100 feet setback from the Millbrook going through the north of the property. Obviously, this is kind of the, the dominant natural resource, primary natural resource on this property. So we're showing, we're trying to provide as much, and just demonstrating on the plan that we're over 100 feet setback from that. And if I zoom in any on the plan here, I may not be able to, just with my scrolling here. Much of the, the single families are actually much farther away from that and outside of 100 feet. So we have well outside of 100 feet for, for setback from the Millbrook there. We also chose to locate the single-family units on that northerly edge, just because those would be less intensive. You just have some clearing activity and then some landscaping and then essentially lawn area that would still kind of make up that developed area that's adjacent to those resources there. Similarly, as you, as we cross towards the rear pod, there are some encroachments within the 75-foot setback, which include on, I'm scrolling over right now, one single-family residence, some of the, some of the roadway. But for the single-family residence here, and then another up here, we wanted to note that these are predominantly located within the existing developed areas of that existing lawn. There are some areas that, that may be partial clearing just to, just to get in and get around for constructability purposes around these single-family structures, but we've really taken all measures, more or less, to make sure that we are maintaining as much as we can the setbacks to these streams here. Some of the items that kind of influenced this as well, previously, we had worked with staff in our initial concepts here. We actually had located the commercial space actually to the rear of the parking for it, so parking actually facing Route 1. And per staff's comments there, we actually flipped those so that we could maintain the kind of commercial wall along Route 1. What that ended up doing, because there's a larger building setback 40 feet along Route 1, we ended up having to push a lot of that first pod westerly, which actually pushed us a little bit further into those setbacks. But we're feeling comfortable about the plan, and I think we've done a really good job to maintain and then provide more of these setbacks to specifically Millbrook, and then additionally, these tributary streams here. As far as grading and drainage goes, of course, everything is going from south to north into these tributary streams, everything towards Millbrook, and then heading easterly across Route 1. What we're doing for drainage within the project here, we have multiple BMPs focal points in the rear development pod that will be picking up curb line runoff from the two roadways, and then those go into some subsurface chamber systems and then are discharged out towards the streams. And then additionally, we are picking up with a series of catch basin systems and then going towards two other subsurface sand filters in the first development pod. So what we're trying to do is really kind of break down and actually provide multiple BMPs kind of more at the source that rather than some larger, larger systems as well. For utilities here, great access on Route 1 to public water, public sewer, and power through here. We're not showing or anticipating any natural gas at this time. I believe natural gas is actually located further actually north of the, of the industrial park intersection as well. So we're anticipating mostly electric for these units here, but something that we're certainly open to consider as we kind of move along. This is just another look at the landscape plan here. I think we've done a fairly good job. We're still waiting for the landscape peer review comments, but I think we've done a good job of presenting and providing a good street line with trees along the primary roadway within here, and then certainly around the driveway entrance as well. I think by providing that commercial space towards the frontage also provides a little bit of buffering as well for us for the residential units. And then as you make your way further towards the rear of the site, there is a natural buffer that goes around the property that will really, really kind of buffer both from and within the development here. And with that, I'll open it up to the board for discussion and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any planning board questions, comments? Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I had kind of my checklist for completion. One of them was buffering and the 25, and thank you for the very detailed narrative on that. I have a lot of, you know, concern. It's this, I spoke of earlier, the compatibility. This is the Route 1 district, and I know that they have some proposed changes, and we kind of have infill from the Scarborough Line coming in with a lot of residential construction, but this is kind of still in the heart of Route 1, almost all commercial around it. And in fact, if we were to go westerly, I believe, isn't that a budding industrial park land in the Spring Hill section?
It is.
It is. So very beautiful design, by the way. I think you did a great job fitting in some of the topography that's there and getting the residential feel. I, I just kind of see buffering as being a very important piece of this, to throw that use in there, given the existing uses in that area, whether it be the, you know, the theater just down the road, the gas station, you know, the amusement park. There's a lot of stuff that goes on different times of use, and to put residential in, in the heart of that, I think buffering and trying to make it as secluded could be a real challenge. You know, the inversion of the, the commercial piece, I really like the commercial piece. That's important. It's, it's still a Route 1 corridor, and it's important for our tax base. I've never been a big fan of the parking in the rear, because it's never been a big fan of the parking in the rear, because it looks like the business is closed to me, but that's the model that the city advisors and a lot of steering committees have gone with. And so, thank you for working with staff and making that happen. And I realize that you're encroaching on a couple of those buffers, because your whole development kind of shifted back because of the front setback. Like I said, I, I think it's real important we do a site walk to get a real good lay of the land. Having been in some of this area, the topography is quite a challenge. Some of these ravines are pretty deep. And some of that buffering, I think, is real, real important. And then also, buffering from the streams, the runoff that may occur from some of these lawns into the, the brooks. Something that I think we need to pay close attention to, especially, hopefully, the Conservation Commission could join us on, on this site walk as well and weigh in. I think it's real important that we maintain that seventy-five-foot setback, and I have a little bit of heartburn about the encroachment for the water quality. I also noted the traffic, traffic analysis. I know you presented one, so I think it kind of checked the box for completeness. But our peer review had, had noted that there was several kind of incorrect datas for the seasonal use that were overlaid or, or worked into that design, and they should be revisited. I don't think I saw it in the response afterwards. I assume you're still working on the, the traffic review?
That was actually provided in our January 9th response letter.
Was that like the 300-page one? That was a really big one?
It might have been the one.
Yeah.
With the revised traffic.
Thanks. So I'll try to look for, for that as well. Like I said, I think they met the, the completeness portion, but it does need to be worked out for final. I had a little bit of concern about the financial capacity letter. I don't think I've ever seen one sitting on the board like that. And I don't think it necessarily weighs very comfortably with me. I mean, if there is, you know, a private party that's going to support this, I would think that they could work together and get a, an approved lending institution to give a financial guarantee or a financial letter, financial support, rather than just like, it seemed like a private party. I didn't think that would meet what I would envision for financial capacity letter. Like I said, I wanted to do a site walk with the Conservation Commission. And then the purchase and sale was supposed to expire on March 1st. Is that something that you guys have kind of worked through the details with the delays that we've had with the Planning Board quorums? And is that going to be extendable?
I believe so, yes.
Pretty amicably? Okay. So, Madam Chair, those are the only issues that I had kind of noted. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Jim?
I, I, I share Jeff's concerns about the buffering, and, and I'm sure as we continue to go through the proposal here, I mean, I also agree with Jeff that it's a, you know, it's a very, very thoughtful proposal, and, and certainly, you know, I'm sure the buffering can be worked out. It looks like a great proposal. The, the big concern I had was demonstrating financial capacity, because the letter that you have is, is from Ted Moore, and, and we know him, because he did the Saco Island East project. Very good person, but it looks like his letter is basically saying he's, he's going to provide the funds necessary to at least get Planning Board approval. And, but if, if I'm understanding this correctly, and perhaps the planners could correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the requirement for financial capacity has to be the ability to, you know, financial ability to construct, operate, and maintain the development. And as Jeff noted, it's usually a letter from a bank or some financial institution to show that, that, that the applicant has enough funds to actually complete the project successfully. Do you, and I think that's part of our application for completeness, too, that that has to be presented. Is, is it going to be difficult for your client to come up with a decent financial capacity letter from an institution?
There was a letter that was also provided from a private institution.
Well, I, I was looking for that, and, and I think it's in, I was looking through your materials, and I think it was, I was looking at page 122 of 126. And that was just that letter from Ted Moore. Was there something else in there that I missed?
That maybe it was just in the, been in the original application, that submission, and not the January 9th letter, I don't believe. But the additional letter from Ted was also provided, just, just in addition to, you know, the understanding that, you know, we're working through this, and they have at least a commitment to fund for the larger project. But that Ted is also, you know, has been demonstrated to do projects in, in the city, and is, you know, willing to also, you know, assist with the project, too.
Okay. Well, I'm still a little troubled about the, because that, that is a part of the checklist for financial capacity. I mean, perhaps to the planner, Emily, is it, I mean, certainly, before we grant approval, we would need to, the applicant would need to demonstrate greater financial ability to complete the project, not just the, the letter from Ted Moore.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, please. So there's, Caleb, can you just press your button for a second?
Yeah, sorry.
So there's this letter that was submitted.
I'm, I'm sorry, I guess I missed that. So...
So it's from Main Street Lending LLC. The thing I think we're used to seeing, and why I flagged this for the board to discuss, is we're used to seeing a letter from a financial institution, such as like a bank or a credit union. So I just wanted to flag the ordinance standard and make sure that you had eyes on this, and that you had opportunity to ask questions if you needed to. And then there's an additional letter in the other response packet from Ted Moore.
All right. So I apologize, I missed that, that Main Street Lending letter. I saw a reference to Main Street Lending, but I, I just couldn't find it in the packet, because it was so large. So that, for now, certainly would address my concerns about financial capacity. And so I would say that the application is complete, from my point of view, with that, with the addition of the Main Street Lending letter.
Jeff?
Madam Chair, I would like to say that I apologize as well for, for missing this one. And I would agree that I think this is satisfactory. In fact, I wish more of our financial capacity letters would come in. This clearly states that they've proven that the applicant is approved, and I very much like seeing that, because sometimes it just says, "We believe they might have the capacity, we'd be willing to lend." This is saying that they, if they do the two criteria at the bottom, with the executive, executed purchase and sale agreement, and permitted construction of the 49 mixed-use units, they're going to lend the money. I think that's exactly what our ordinance calls out. So I, too, feel like financial capacity has been satisfied.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll move that we determine the application's complete.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thanks for the second, Jeff. Any discussion? Motion to find application complete. All in favor? Jeff? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Four to zero to find the application complete. And I'm sorry, if I shut off my mic too soon, I also voted yes. There's a note in here regarding next steps. Does the board want to schedule a site walk? Sounds like the answer is yes. Do we have a date on the schedule where that would work?
Working on the scheduling right here. And I assume we'd also like to have the Conservation Commission participate in the site walk.
Well, Madam Chair, while the planning staff is trying to find a date for us to do a site walk with the Conservation Commission, I'll move that we schedule a public hearing in this matter for February 18th.
Thanks for the vote, and Jim, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second, Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor of scheduling a public hearing February 18th? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Four to zero to schedule a public hearing for February 18th.
We could do February 12th, if we want to do the day after. That's a Wednesday, the day after our, our site walk on the 11th. Or the 14th, if Friday's a little easier to accommodate, we could do the morning on the, Friday the 14th.
What a romantic way to spend the morning.
Or if we wanted to keep it on Tuesdays, we could just make this one February 18th, and do 8:00 AM for February 18th.
Board members have a preference?
Madam Chair, I'd, I'd prefer to do the 12th, and I like to have a little bit of time to prepare and, and not necessarily have them on the same day as our, our meetings.
Sure, and that way we might also get some feedback from Conservation Commission before our meeting. Does the 12th work for staff?
Yeah. Can we actually do the 13th? Sorry. Thursday the 13th?
Thursday the 13th.
Apologies about that.
Does that work for everybody, the majority? Thursday the 13th, so 8:00 AM again?
Yes.
Does that work for the applicant?
Yes.
And where would we park for this? I don't think everyone who's participating would fit in Mr. Mead's driveway.
I believe we should be able to park sufficiently in the driveway.
So 8:00 AM, February 13th, at 800 Portland Road. Thank you.
Madam, if you're familiar, is there a parking area that's close by?
Car dealership. I don't know the name of the car dealership, but of course, they're not, they're not involved with this application.
Correct. And then the movie theater is just down the way as well, if that were an option.
Okay.
Does that work? Oh, yeah. He's driving something large. There is a car, a car dealership right next door. Great. Anything else on this item? We'll see you at the site walk.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So next item is 6H Bradley Street, map 67 lot 27 Bradley Greens condominium development. Continued application completeness review for preliminary subdivision site plan and conditional use review for multi-family residential project consisting of 16 duplex units, duplex buildings, rather, 32 units. So can we have an update from planning staff?
Yes, thank you. We have seen this application a couple of times before, so we noted that the dates in our recap there for you. On November 12th, there was a general correspondence item submitted, so you have a little bit of an update about the redesign for this site. So there's been some redesign of the stormwater considerations. There's some recommendations based on the City Engineers December 27th review memo, so we've just highlighted those for you. We are recommending that at some point, a high-intensity soil survey be provided to ensure that the soils that are mapped in the stormwater report accurately reflect the soils that are present on the site. There's a little more detail on that in the City Engineers review memo. We've provided some departmental reviews here as well. We updated those since the last time that you've seen this. Peer reviews were in the meeting packets. We did host a site walk on September 16th. We provided a link to those notes. We also provided an update on where some of these other items were at since, since the last meeting. So the applicant has generally addressed some of the, the other items that came up previously as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from the applicant.
Thank you. My name is Chris Taylor, an engineer with Sebago Technics, representing the applicant Bradley Greens LLC. Sorry, just trying to get this to connect.
Is it working for you, Chris? Do you need help?
It's not, I'm sorry. Thank you, Shannon. Sorry about that. This is the updated site layout that we've had. There's only a minor difference to the building layout. Previously, in this area, we had a subsurface stormwater system, and there was a duplex building located here. This area is going to be utilized as a surface stormwater system now. The duplex building that was located in this area has been split apart. We've got a single-family dwelling that's located up here, and then one that's down closer to Bradley Street. So the number of units has not changed. We've just kind of taken one of the duplexes and split it apart to become two single-family houses. The intent with those floor plans is to utilize the floor plan for the duplexes. It would just be one half of the building. And just wanted to kind of go through some of the, the changes and the updates that we've, additional material that we've provided. In addition to the, the stormwater updates and those building shifts, sidewalks have been added to the, along the side of the road and around the loop. We've provided an updated financial capacity letter, provided the historic natural areas and IF&amp;W review letters, and submitted those that were requested. Provided the, revised the subdivision plan to include parking tables, lot, impervious coverage table, and a net residential density calculation for the, for the property. The landscaping has been revised as well, with some additional buffering along the property lines that was requested as part of the landscape peer review consultant. You can see those on the plan here. Some additional buffering along this property line to kind of screen from the, the adjacent duplex, some additional buffering here, and along this property line as well, and in this back corner, as well as along the rear of the property. We feel that this will provide some additional screening that was requested. Some of the other additions to the landscaping is to add trees between the, in kind of the rear yards along the center line here, and some buffering to the parking spaces, the guest parking spaces that are located here on the site. We've added the site distance and speed limit table to the... We've added the site distance and speed limit table to Bradley Street that was requested by the city engineer, added the demo legend, added a street sign, snow storage areas, some additional street sidewalk reconstruction along Bradley Street. We've added the tree protection details and revisions to the landscaping notes that were commented on by the peer review consultants and the city engineer. We responded to the traffic review memo as well, and so I think we've addressed as best we can the completeness for this application.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from planning board members? Jeff?
I was thinking, but...
Oh, well, you looked like you were raising your hand.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know if we have the applicant have to go through this right now, but I'm hoping that maybe staff, can we put on one of our trainings how this whole rework and the pause took place because of the easement that was supposed to exist? And I would like to know how it's going to work really moving forward. That's one of the design criteria that we're oftentimes looking for is connectivity and future growth for subdivisions. And obviously, looking at the logs, the applicant has worked very diligently trying to get this communication going. Does this set some sort of a precedence in the future for existing subdivisions not being able to utilize, you know, the easements or the future development connectivity that we as a board put in place? And like I said, I don't think we need to discuss it here, but is that something we can get on to one of our trainings relatively soon to know if the effectiveness of what we're doing for future work is going to be possibly compromised?
This will not create a precedent. It was a little bit of a unique situation.
Okay.
So, excuse me, Madam Chair. It was a unique situation. It's not going to create a precedent.
Any other questions or comments? Jim?
So I think your materials all answered this question, but I just want to be sure. So all the stormwater on this site is going to be directed toward that drainage area that you mentioned, and that will be treating all the stormwater, and nothing will be treated off-site? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There's, there are two areas that the stormwater drains to. The majority of the loop drains to the stormwater basins that you were referencing, and then the single-lane road kind of coming in off of Bradley Street. This portion of the site here drains towards Bradley Street, so there are some stormwater features up by Bradley Street to accommodate that stormwater runoff.
No, thank you. That's the one thing I wasn't clear on, but appreciate that. I'm sure it was a fair amount of work redesigning that, but it looks good. For application of completeness, it seems that they've checked all the boxes for that purpose, so I'll move that we find the application complete.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thanks for the second, Jeff. Any discussion?
Chris, could you just kind of elaborate on the second treatment or drainage, right? Because you had treatment before, and you were going to let a controlled outfall go into the city stormwater sewer, but now you're basically creating a secondary leaching pond, if you will. It's going to just permeate the treated water into the ground, right? So it's not designed to be like a wet pond. It won't be wet the majority of the time. It will be wet for some time after a substantial rainfall, but we're not looking at having a wet pond in this development, correct?
That's correct. Are you talking about the treatments and the depressions up by Bradley Street, or the ones?
The ones by the willows, so that larger one.
Yeah, yes. So these will be, these are underdrained soil filters, so they have a drainage porous, or sorry, a perforated underdrain beneath the soil filter. So it's designed that stormwater will come in, sit in the depression, it'll drain through the soil media, and that's kind of the treatment and the cleaning surface of it, get into these underdrains, and then be discharged at near the property line.
That's correct. It's still, so it's a depression system to allow the filtration. It's not like a completely buried chamber system that we've seen on recent ones, but it's not intended to be wet the majority of the year.
That's correct. It's not intended to hold water beyond, you know, beyond the storm period, basically.
I guess I was thinking of fencing and possibility for keeping kids that might possibly get hurt if it was a wet pond, but no, I am good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
There's no other discussion? All in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So motion to find the application complete passes four to zero. The next step would be a public hearing. Planning staff has suggested a hearing date of February 18th.
Madam Chair, I move to schedule a public hearing for February 18th.
Thanks for the motion, Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second, Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Four to zero to schedule a public hearing for February 18th. Anything else as far as planning staff is concerned prior to the February 18th meeting?
We have the sidewalk that we will be scheduling. Oh, sorry, we already have the sidewalk on this one.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to be clear. Will there be a high-intensity soil survey done here as the city staff recommend it?
So we have conducted test pits on this site where the stormwater basins and stormwater treatment systems are proposed. It's our opinion that that is sufficient to document the soil conditions on the site. We've been in conversation with the city engineer about the stormwater comments that he has that are still outstanding, and we're working to come to a resolution. In our conversations, there wasn't, Joe didn't specifically recommend or request that a high-intensity soil survey be conducted on the site. The other piece of this is that there's, for the stormwater analysis showing the pre- and post-runoff rates, there's a large area that we're modeling that is off, that is not on the property. I think it's actually greater than 50% of the stormwater areas. Stormwater watershed is off the property, and that would not be able to be, a soil survey would not be able to be conducted off the property to show those conditions. So we're, I guess, requesting that we not do a high-intensity soil survey, and based on the test pits that have already been conducted on the site.
Well, I mean, is, you know, provided the city engineer, you know, agrees with you, I'm fine with that, but, you know, if the city engineer maintains his position that that's required, I mean, I would be inclined to request that you do one. That would just be my opinion. But that's for another day, I think.
Jeff?
Madam Chair, I would tend to agree with Jim, and there's got to be some very careful thought, because what was going to be controlled and run, as runoff into the storm system is now going to be held on-site. And, you know, I think we all saw during our sidewalk that the Abutting Condominium Association, some of the storm treatments didn't look like they were either completed or maintained. And if we were to be having a situation where, you know, we're inadvertently raising kind of the water table in this area, I think is a little bit concerning. One, the applicant's going to be building new homes, and if I recall, these homes were going to have basements in what you were proposing for construction, correct?
They're...
Crawl spaces?
Yeah, crawl spaces, which really wouldn't be, with the amount of fill required for the site, really wouldn't be below existing grade very much.
But are you comfortable with what might come down the pike from the neighbor who maybe could have had the solution if they start having water issues? I think there was one, one public member on our sidewalk that started talking about events that were happening with their system. And I grant, that's not on the applicant here, but if there's already some sort of existing site conditions that are up on that engineering level, and our city engineer had recommended it, I would tend to agree that there ought to be a site survey, at least in the area of where that ponding, that treatment's going to be. And I respect your opinion, right? There's quite a bit of flow that kind of came in from the north and went around the perimeter of the property, but the, you're using that modeling to get a certain volume of water that needs to be treated, and it's going, you're directing it now to these ponds, and unfortunately, by no choice of yours, it has no place to go except to permeate into the ground. So I would tend to agree that it's real important, if the city engineer feels like he wants that high-intensity survey, I would support that and require that as well.
I guess one clarification is that the recommendation didn't come from the city engineer for the high-intensity soil survey.
So, Madam Chair, I can clarify. I spoke with Joe. He needs additional details on the soil conditions on the site. He asked that of the engineer, so I had indicated that we should have a high-intensity soil survey, at least in portions of the site, to make sure that we're getting the correct soil mapping based on what Joe told me. I'm uncomfortable with having the wrong soil mapping or concerns with soil mapping, especially if the existing conditions are not fully reflective. Now, of course, if Joe feels comfortable with what you provide with the test pits, that's certainly fine, but I mean, at some point, it's getting to be to the point where it's almost a high-intensity soil survey anyway. So that's where my recommendation came from, and it was in coordination with Joe.
Do you feel, do we need to make a motion to make that part of what we're expecting to see?
Well, I don't know that we do for tonight's meeting, but I think we, everyone's unnoticed that that's an issue that needs to be resolved, and I'm sure it will be.
Yeah, I guess I would just ask that, so long as we satisfy the city engineer's, you know, concerns with the soil conditions and, you know, address the stormwater conditions, and he's happy with it, if that requires a high-intensity soil survey or not, I think our request is that that just come from him, and so long as we satisfy his conditions, I think, you know, we're kind of looking for his direction on that, so.
It would be a joint direction from staff.
And I didn't want to cut out the planner in that request either, because Emily would know quite well whether or not something like that was required, so I appreciate her and Joe's input to make that final decision along with the applicant.
All right, so we have a public hearing set for February 18th?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next item is 6I, 197 Jenkins Road, map 91 lot 7, proposed private road. Continued application completeness review for site plan review for a proposed private road and condo unit. Is there a staff update on this one? Shannon?
Yes, thank you. Since the planning board last discussed this project, a couple of things have happened. First, we all participated in a sidewalk, so planning board, along with a couple members of the Conservation Commission, walked the site with the applicant and the applicant's After the sidewalk that night, the Conservation Commission met once again with the applicant to ask further questions and create their report. Their report was included in the packet for this item. And some, the engineer for this project has submitted a couple more items that were requested by staff, including today, there is in your after-the-fact packet some updated plan sets in which the engineer moved back or trimmed down the amount impervious service at the end of the road, which was something that the Conservation Commission was told while on the sidewalk, and then wrote in their report that they strongly supported. There's still a couple of items that have been requested that have not yet been received. Your memo is actually slightly outdated, only because we have now received traffic information, and this project has been sent out to our traffic peer reviewer for comments. Still waiting on landscaping information. And there was a discrepancy on the site plan application that we've asked it to be refilled out to identify Silver Pines LLC as the property owner, because it was transferred from, and Patrick can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was transferred from Five Star Holdings LLC to Silver Pines LLC, which is, both of which I believe are owned by Patrick.
A hundred percent owned by Five Star Holdings. I think that satisfied that, I thought, in our last conversation, but. Patrick Donahue from Five Star Holdings. I'm sorry that our engineer couldn't make it here tonight. He's got another project he's working on, but I feel pretty confident I can answer any questions when I have. As Shannon said, we did do a sidewalk, and I think that was a very good process, actually, because it gave a better lay of the land and how the waters kind of moved through the site. We were able to stake things out so the board could see where things kind of laid out on the site. Other than that, the other comment we did talk about on the sidewalk was shrinking that road down 10 feet or so. We did do that on the plan. The other thing that we did do is we moved the spreader lip, I'm sorry, spreader lip filter system from the right-hand side to the very end of the drive road, so that all the water would be treated through that as a final step. So I would ask to turn it over to you guys to see if you have any questions about any of those things.
Do we have any planning board member questions or comments regarding this application tonight? This is an application completeness review again. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We haven't actually kind of debriefed after our sidewalk. I thought the sidewalk was very helpful. Thank you very much for flagging or staking out the proposed structure locations. It was kind of eye-opening for me, some of the changes in topography that they have in an area that I've known historically as being pretty forested wetlands. There were a few higher spots. I also thought it was very interesting to see on the existing structures just how high the soil engineer and the septic design had them build up. If you notice the huge mound that was coming out from the existing building, they're, again, more than likely because of the limiting factor of the groundwater being so close. And then how high the road bed was, we noticed the steepness of the grating that needed to be reworked at kind of the hammerhead to meet the standards for private road construction. It's going to be reworked as part of your drainage program. So there was lots of, I think, very good information that was able to be grasped. There wasn't a whole lot of large trees to be worried about, but those, kind of the brooks, the streams were very active and very defined. And it just, for me, it kind of just reiterated the concern for this whole area, because it's this constant creep, right? And Jenkins Road has been so heavily focused on. We've built out all that they can build out on the city infrastructure, right? So now our goals of building where existing utilities are, our water and our sewer have been basically built to capacity, except for the ADUs that will be going in. And then we've got this section, right? And it just, it wants to continue that build pattern, but we don't have the infrastructure. And I don't know when, where does it stop? And I know we talked about the hydro-geological assessment for the water, because that remains a concern of mine, not so much always for the potable water on-site, but the brooks that are there, the runoff that could come out of these leach fields. And that's a soil scientist thing. That's well beyond my pay grade, sitting here on this board, but I think we need to be very aware of the density that we're... But I think we need to be very aware of the density that we're allowing. Can't continue in the same pattern down the Jenkins Road without the utility services there. Without water and sewer, we have to be very aware of these groundwater conditions. And yes, it's two units now, but there's still a large parcel of land that can be subdivided in the five-year window. You know, how many more units are we putting towards that waterway? And I just don't know, how does that be, how do we, what do we do if this problem really explodes? And it's not just one or two lots where there's water contamination, but we've got these that have been built out, and now the city has to carry the burden of trying to get them municipal water out there, or sewer or both. Because this, this growth, it's just hard to where you draw the line. The applicants come before us. I just think we need to be aware and cognizant that these homes are tighter than we've traditionally had on private water and sewer lots. You know, we're continuing that pattern, and yes, they meet the criteria, but they're right on the radii. Every one of those buffers of the 100-foot setback is right there between the well and the septic. So, what can we do to, you know, allow an applicant to continue to have growth but protect the people who are going to occupy those homes and be citizens of our city? And I just have concern about making sure they have the necessities, the water and sewer disposal, without creating a health hazard. So, I still think that the hydrogeological assessment needs to be addressed in some way. Or is there something that says, you know, are you agreeable that there'll be no further development of the lot? Where we know, okay, these two houses are going to stop, and now we have this green space that's preserved to kind of create some natural filter? Those are some of my thoughts. It was just very unsettling. Yes, there are some high areas where I think you could very comfortably put a home and not have a groundwater issue, but they immediately dropped off very quickly to, you know, forested wetlands where we have to start being concerned about where the drinking water's coming from and where the disposal, the private disposal fields are going to go. So, I have some concern. I think we need, you know, like, very specialized people to tell us this would still be okay here. Because what do we do as a city if it kind of mushrooms out and we don't have the ability to give them clean water, and there's a contamination issue? I don't know. How long is that going to last? We have just up off of Samuel Marshall where they were doing a hydrogeological assessment, and they couldn't get groundwater because groundwater just changed so quickly. Is that a result of some of what's been going on with the intense development in that area? Are we changing things faster than the engineers are predicting? So, there's just concerns, and I feel like there needs to be some sort of a line, some sort of a tapering off from the high-intensity development into a rural, rural area like it has been. I don't know where that happens, and I know the applicant's here before us, and we just need to make sure that whoever's going to move in there is going to have safe water and disposal in the future. So, I think the question needs to be asked. Thank you.
So, are you suggesting that there needs to be a hydrogeological survey to find this application complete?
I would, I would think so. I mean, because it's in our criteria, that the limiting factor, according to their document, was 13 inches or 18 inches, and anything under 48 is, you know, typically where the city, yeah. So, our section 179-4.03LC for the proposed development plan, if groundwater is within 48 inches, that we might, we want to be mapping out all the wells within 200 feet of the project, of the project boundaries. And we also have to take into consideration a hydrogeological assessment. That's one of the triggers, the criteria that we are supposed to be evaluating.
Any other planning board member questions or comments? Jim?
So, you know, I haven't really thought hard about whether or not a hydrogeologic assessment would be critical here, but I understand everything Jeff's saying, and I know we've talked about that on this project, which is why some of the, there was some mapping of the wells and the septic systems and where they're located, and if they meet the appropriate distances from each other and so forth. So, I don't have any particular thought about, at least for application of completeness concerns, you know, requiring that assessment, a hydrogeologic assessment. But, you know, I'm not saying it's not needed, and at some point in the process, we may conclude that it's essential, and if we do, I'll, you know, I'm all for that. There were two questions that I had, though. One was, the applicant had indicated that the, you know, like, a landscape plan might not be necessary because it's a private road, but Shannon indicated that we are still looking for a landscaping plan. So, I'm confused about that. Do we need one? And if so, what are we really looking for in terms of landscaping when we're, the primary thing we're trying to do is approve a private road?
That's a great question, Jim. Madam Chair, do you, can I address?
Please.
Okay, perfect. So, during your initial review of this project, during the first time we talked about it for application completeness, a landscaping plan is something that you guys had hoped to see. It's not required for private roads, but there was some discussion of how much, like, tree or wooded buffer is at the front of the driveway. So, I know that during the site walk, we did not spend a lot of time there, but it was just something that was brought up in your conversations, so I wanted to make sure that I captured it. If, after being on the site walk, you are satisfied with what was present, then it's not required. But if you would like, you know, some more photographs of what is there or if something else could satisfy that interest, it would be a great time to just let the applicant know.
So, thank you, Shannon. So, I'm not convinced that a landscaping plan is necessary in this instance. I mean, the front of the road, you know, on the Jenkins Road, it looks the way it looks, and it's looked that way for a while, so. And I think the applicant has already said they weren't going to make any major changes out there. So, I don't think a landscape plan is really essential here. Yes, so, the, I mean, there are other things that need to be done, like the road maintenance agreement and so forth, but I don't think that's essential for application of completeness. So, to my mind, I think the application is complete so that we can review it in more detail. So, unless a board member feels differently, I'll move to determine that the application's complete.
Thank you for the motion, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second, Matt. Any discussion? Motion to find the application complete. All in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. So, application is found complete, four to zero.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we schedule a public hearing in this matter for February 18th.
Thanks for the motion, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second. Jeff, motion to schedule a public hearing for February 18th. Any discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So, public hearing in this matter will be held for February 18th. Do you feel like you have a pretty good idea of?
Yes.
The items we're looking for?
Yes, I do. Do you want me to kind of make some comment back on some of the questions as far as the ones that Jeffrey Brochur made? Probably give him a little bit more information of our thought process there, if it helps. Or is that something he'd rather have in writing from our engineers?
How do you feel about that? I mean, I think if you're coming back on the 18th, having something from the engineers
Okay.
probably makes sense.
That's fine by me. It just...
I would tend to agree, and, you know, the hydrogeological assessment thing is, it's just, it's technical, and we can Google and we can research, and, but it really needs an engineering opinion of the type of soils, just like the previous applicant. There's concerns about how quickly water will drain through. There's a whole nother science to it.
I agree.
And, you know, I think, you said you educated yourself quite a bit and talked with your team and let them give us a response, and...
I hope you can appreciate that I did take the time to research some of your questions and talk to you about them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But as far as the next survey, we're taking extra steps of filtering the property's water runoff in a couple steps. We're taking extra steps with that water spreader. We're trying to treat the water above and beyond what we normally would do in a project of this size because of the concerns. But I think that your comments about the overall area is definitely something the town should be looking at because I agree with you, with more building back there, there should be more. I just don't know if our project should be that, or should be a larger conversation about the area.
Madam Chair, I don't want to get off track, and I understand that there are clearly two types of treatment systems. You get your surface runoff from the road beds and the collection on the side of the road, and you guys are treating that, and we see those reviews oftentimes on every application. But then there's also the potable water concern for the water supply, which can, you know, is based on more information about which type of aquifer you might be on, the types of wells that you use, and that's a completely different study of water. And like I said, I think it's just real important that we have a very accurate snapshot of what's going on, what type of aquifer is in your area, what type of wells are being used, you know, what is happening, and just to make sure that the water on your site will always remain in high quality for the occupants. So, that's my biggest concern, is your site.
Water supply.
Your supply for consumable water, potable water.
No, I agree with you that that is a high standard for us as well. We want to make sure that whoever buys those homes have quality water. I just felt that it was maybe a little bit of a stretch to do such a high review based on, I did get some feedback that I did send to the city from Albert Frick Associations that said that that might be too much of a step for our project, that it wasn't needed based on the topography. But I do understand what you're trying to do, so it's not, I'm trying not to argue with you. I just want to make it clear that I feel like that's a little bit further of a step for our project than we should really have to make at this point. But I do agree with you that there is some water quality issues that could arise in the future. As far as answering your question on any type of deed restriction for the property, no further development, I would be open to the one five-year split-off lot and then the rest of the property being conserved. It would be my goal, too, in five years, to possibly build another house out there at some point. But I would be willing to entertain some sort of deed restriction on the rest of the land after that that kept it conserved. We do have a history of building conservation subdivisions, so we are fans of those that where there's some leftover land that gives that buffer for the neighbors and for the people using it that they have some wooded space. I appreciate that. My own property, and I don't want people building next to me, so I know, I know how people feel. We still are Mainers. We don't like people next door to us, and I understand, but things are getting a lot more dense in here, for sure.
So, I guess you have some items to work on for the 18th, and we will see you back then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, that's the last application review. Looks like we don't have minutes to review from the last meeting. I know we discussed reviewing last meeting's minutes and tonight's minutes at our meeting next Tuesday. So, do we have anything else at this point?
No.
I guess we're adjourned at 9:06. Thank you, everybody.